We'll try to do this. How's? It didn't hurt. He means one way.
So if I can, like, not in one minute. I just said it first.
You know, the next sixty five. And we did it. Actually, that's the same thing. We're working on that. It was a long time ago.
Please stand for the pledge allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of the Constitution, our nation, our God, and to this world with the gratitude of our strong.
Good evening. May I have a motion for approval of the minutes of the meetings held February twenty fourth, twenty sixth, twenty seventh, March second, third, and fourth, and fifth of two thousand and twenty.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign, motion carries. Does not look like we had anyone signed up to address the board this evening. Move on to approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second. Have a motion and second. All those in favor of approval of agenda signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign, motion carries. Good news report, please.
I think the sun is picking out just in time for the good news report tonight. Well, as you know, at seven o'clock tonight, we will gather at the El Ride Shrine Mosque to celebrate the real heroes in the Sioux Falls School District. Approximately nineteen hundred of our thirty four hundred members of our staff are teachers. They are the miracle workers who encourage, support, guide, and help students on their educational journeys. While there are never enough ways to say thank you to the men and women who choose this profession, and also, this is their passion, tonight, we do our best to lift them up and celebrate those teachers. Nominations were open from November first through the end of January. Parents, students, colleagues, and community members were encouraged to submit nominations for the thirty second annual Dr. John Harris Sioux Falls Teacher of the Year. Bernide Motor Cars has, uh, has supported this award since its beginning. That was thirty two years ago, and during that time, they have surpassed donating more than a hundred thousand dollars to our teachers for these awards. Each year, the award winner receives four thousand dollars as a cash gift, and they can use that however they wish. Vacation, maybe not a cruise at this time, but we'll see. Sixty eight nominations came in this past year. Judges, including Nan Baker, who served as a school board representative on that committee, considered the nominations and selected four finalists. Grace Gill is a government and debate teacher at Roosevelt High School. George Hawkins is a government and American history teacher at New Tech High. Janelle Revere, culinary arts teacher at the CTE Academy, along with Molly Rost, kindergarten teacher at Harvey Dunn. And tonight, we will honor all nominees, our finalists, and then announce our big winner. So tonight really is a celebration and appreciation, little bit of fun mixed in there as we lift up the professionals who lift up our students every day. And of course, we will post that information on our social media pages to let folks know who the winner is. It's always a uplifting event and one that really showcases the wonderful things that our teachers do in the Sioux Falls School District.
Thank you. Thank you for that. Onto conflicts of interest. No new conflicts were presented to the board. Approval of the consent, consent agenda items eight A through E. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign, motion carries. There were no new supplemental consent agenda items. Onto the reports of the superintendent, please.
Well, that was quick. Well, as you can see, we have three reports tonight. The first report is a report of the Joe Foss and President's Academy Programming Update Report. Here to give that report is Dr. Jamie Knoll, Assistant Superintendent.
Good evening, board members. And the purpose of this evening's report is to update the board on the work of the committee that was established to evaluate and expand the programming at the Joe Foss and President's Academy programs here in the Sioux Falls School District that are located at Axle Park Building. This coincides with our strategic plan, and specifically in the area of student outcomes, the Strategic Initiative one point two point three, the review and develop the district delivered programming at Joe Foss and the President's Academy. So in alignment with the strategic plan, what we did in the process is we looked at and put together a twenty one member committee. The committee represented building administration, central administration, our counselors and contract employees, our liaisons that work with our EL students, and our success coordinators. From there, we really dug into a few of the main topics that we wanted to address with the Joe Foss programming, Joe Foss and President's Academy. Part of that was established with the Ombudsman, and when we contracted with the Ombudsman Services, a lot of that was for the online format that we had at the Joe Foss program. And that fit the needs of many of those students as we'd gone for several years, but it became more and more evident through things like the new graduation requirements that we needed more flexibility in the scheduling that we had at the Joe Foss program and for our President's Academy students. Also, our graduation rate, there was another significant factor that we looked at when we were trying to reevaluate what we had for programming for our students there at that program. And helping them to also see through a variety of options that they could see more purpose in their education to potentially go on to an associate's degree or four-year college or whatever it may be from there. So these were some of the key factors that we looked at when we started to review this as a committee. We had subcommittees that we broke into with our twenty one member committee, and the focus area there was our career and technical education opportunities. So really, how do we help the students become more aware of what's out there? At our CTE site would be one, the academy site there, but also just what are some of the other job potentials they could have if they went on to a associate's degree or career and technical education beyond high school? And we really wanted to introduce them to some of those. So one of the committees focused and worked on that extensively. We also worked on internships and business partnerships. So how can we get some of those students that are at those two locations out into the community more, working with our internships and business sites? And that really was afforded the opportunity through the, the change in the graduation requirements that we had to be able to allow students to earn more credits in that fashion. We also had a committee that looked at any new ideas that we could support our, our students there with, and then curriculum and credits. We obviously wanted to make sure that we still fulfilled their curricular needs and their credit attainment needs towards graduation. When the committees met in between, so our, our large committee met every other week. In between that time, the subcommittees would meet and go through some of their work. Some of that included going to visit different sites that we had, other programs that were offering alternative programming outside of our state. So there's places that they visited or contacted, including locations in the Minneapolis area or down in Omaha. So really to pull in some of those ideas so we didn't have to duplicate some things if there was already a concept or idea out there. The significant changes that we came up with when our group got back together was one in the area of the schedule, and I'll go into that much deeper, but the course offerings that we were going to provide the students and then the student accountability and support because we know full well that that's our most at-risk group for graduation. So we wanted to make sure we had accountability and support there. So the first area of this was the schedule, and you do have a little bit of an outline there. The outline that we have with the committee is much more extensive in providing different opportunities throughout that schedule. But you can see as a general, there's an opportunity at the beginning of the day where students can come in and utilize the lab and finish online coursework if they wish to, and then at the end of the day as well, there's thirty minutes on each end of that that it'll be staffed. In between that time, each one of the sessions is ninety minutes in length. So the ninety minutes would block one, two, three, and four. The students prior to this would do blocks one or block two. So really, there's just two block options, and that's some things that we heard from the student feedback, that that time allotment was just too long for them at times to be able to sit there, working interactively with the online programs. Obviously, they'd have staff support, but just to sit in front of what would be a computer online format and to stay engaged that way. And so we did try to break it down into smaller blocks of time, but give them more opportunities throughout the day. The students need to attend three out of the four blocks to maintain that full-time enrollment over there at the, the Joe Foss program. But when I say that they attend three out of the four, there's a lot of options they can have. So it may not be necessarily physically attending during that time at that site or location. I'll go into that a little bit more. But one of the things that we heard from the students was the schedule. We needed to alter that, and that was one of the proposals that came through. The next piece of that was the course offerings. We did expand that significantly to be able to help the students earn their credits while attending at the Joe Foss or President's Academy. Work for credit is something we've seen quite often, and so we still have that. It's just to hopefully expand that option, and, and you'll see when we have the accountability and support that there's someone that'll be in charge of that to help the students go out and find those work locations or, in the next one, the internships. Another big key piece of that, work for credit, a lot of times, is students lining up a job that may not necessarily turn into a career. And so through the internship piece, we really wanted to expose them to areas that could significantly impact them for a career. Hopefully, in and of that, to be able to go on then to a potential two-year degree or four-year degree if they really found interest in that internship. The CTE block classes, that's something that all our students have access to, and that's where they typically go out there for the full CTE block time. There's the bus route that would take them to and from Axle Park over to our CTE Academy. So that's afforded to them. That's not necessarily new. The online classes, that worked for many students. We did not want to lose that piece of it. We currently have that this year, and, and we have had that through multiple years through the Ombudsman Program. So we purchased and bought multiple online platforms that we can still utilize at the Axle Park and Joe Foss and President's Academy. We actually expanded that, so we're using even more platforms that we recently, are previously had with the Ombudsman Program. CTE minis, that's a new piece of it, and that's where we're going to have a, a bus that will take students from Axle Park over to the CTE Academy for two-week increments so they can go, and it's just during that block three. Then go over there, and the teachers over there put together mini lessons to introduce them to all the different course offerings that they have at the CTE Academy. So there may be a two-week block where they can select to go into culinary arts, or it could be into the health careers, or it could be into automotive, auto body welding. But they can take these two-week blocks, the next two weeks, they can follow up with the different courses they want to. When they complete enough of those, they can pick up elective credit, so it would not go towards a CTE credit, but they can pick up elective credit. The goal of that would be to expose them to multiple career opportunities, so hope that they would eventually take another CTE class there, a full-time block class there, or go into an internship where they can go out and experience what some of those jobs or careers are a little more extensively at an internship. Those CTE minis, though, they'll run for six weeks, once every quarter, so they can go out and experience that time there. The teacher-taught hybrids, that's another one that will be new. We experienced this from some other schools and school districts who were teaching these six-week courses, and so they'd really do more intense, almost like many would see during a interim or, you know, in the college setting where it's more intense, a shorter amount of time, where they're just taking one course or two courses. And so those teacher-taught hybrid courses, a teacher will teach that. They'll go through, and they'll have six weeks to be able to complete that course, and it's really outlined of what they need to complete during that time. So students could work ahead. If they are absent, they know exactly what they've missed, then come back in, and the teacher will have some time where they have teacher-directed class time and then individual time where they'll go around and help the students to complete some of that coursework. That was another piece that we heard from the students is, is sometimes it's hard with the online because they may not fully understand that. They don't have a reading disability, but it's difficult to always read through those things and stay engaged as you're going through and reading that. So the teacher-taught hybrid courses is something that other school districts had seen some great success in, so we brought that in. The ELD are the English Language Development Courses. That's a teacher-taught as well. That's specifically more for our students that are English language learners. And so they'll take that course to continue to work on their language development. And then the last piece are our Educational Development Coursework and Job Shadows. Part of that is again where they can accrue enough hours by going in and doing career enhancement. They could have speakers that come in and talk them about career and career interests, where they're working on resume-building skills, some of those soft skills, interview skills. And so all those would go together into earning credits, and the counselor that would be there in, in the career and technical education, the graduation coach, would take them through a lot of those processes of the Educational Development Coursework. And it's really how do we develop their skills so that they do, do go apply for jobs, that they have a better chance of earning that job? Or if they're trying to apply for college or vocational school, that they can help them complete a lot of that task works. So those are the eight course offerings that we would have out at the Joe Foss President's Academy site. Student accountability and support, as I said, this group of students, each one of them are attached back to their home high school, so it, it, they're still a Washington student or a Roosevelt student or a Lincoln student, but they've obviously wanted a different opportunity, our alternative education route, so they've gone to the Joe Foss or President's Academy program located at Axle Park. We need to give them additional supports because we do have more of the students there that are not graduating or graduating on time. So the additional supports that we have, there is currently a counselor there. The counselor there had other obligations as well within the Axle Park. They're going to be freed up now, so they'll solely be working with the Joe Foss students to give them more additional support there through counseling. Part of the piece that we're going through with the recommendation from the committee was a career and technical education and graduation coach. This is the individual that'll be helping to set them up with the work for credit, the internships, bringing in those individuals from the community. They'll talk to them about career-building skills or how do they complete a resume and, and applying for jobs? So taking them through a lot of those important pieces that many of us have kind of learned as we've gone through life, but really to, to help teach them those skills so that they have a better opportunity when they go out and apply for jobs. Our social worker, there's a social worker that is there. That changed actually a year ago, is her part-time there now. They have not worked directly with the Joe Foss students, but they will now as part of their assignment there. The homeschool success coordinators from the three buildings, because they're located at our three traditional buildings, Washington, Lincoln, and Roosevelt, will each be spending time over there, what, helping those students, especially the ones that are assigned back to their home school. Our EL liaison will work with our ELL students, and then counseling services from Southeast Behavioral Health has had conversations with them, and they're, they're more than open to opening more counseling sessions over at the site there to be able to help the students with a variety of different background of issues they may have. So that's the additional accountability and support piece. The other part of this that comes in, our Joe Foss budget for the programming for FY twenty one is, is just under nine hundred thousand dollars. That's approximately about two hundred and thirty-two thousand less than the contract we had in FY nineteen for the services of the Ombudsman Program. So this will all be staffed now and managed by Sioux Falls School District employees and going through to be able to provide those services in, in all regards, and enhanced number of services that we'd have for those students over at the Joe Foss and President's Academy program. In summary, the twenty one-member committee, you know, reviewed the programming at the current Joe Foss and President's Academy programs and went through and added additional pathways to the existing programs that we currently have there. These changes are recommended to begin in the two thousand and twenty-one school year, and then we'll review those as we go throughout the year to make sure that they are effective. If they're not, then we want to look at other alternatives. We also have processes in place to be able to survey the students to see what other things they feel we may be missing as we go along that path. The final part is the administrative recommendation, and it's to acknowledge the report on the work completed by the Joe Foss and President's Academy Review Committee. And I will stand by for questions.
Thank you, Dr. Knoll. This is one of the most exciting reports I've seen. What you, the committee and you have done is revolutionary to Joe Foss. I think this is going to be so more meeting the students in what they need. When the change decide, when we decided to depart from the Ombudsman Program, it could have been easy to say, we'll just continue with online courses or something, and to come up with a plan like this, I'm very, very excited to see how the outcomes, what they will result in for these students. So thank you to the committee and you for putting this together.
Thank you.
What's the average length of time that a student spends at Joe Foss? Like, is it a year? Is it three years? Is it? And I know it's, there's both ends of the range, right? Because you could come over as a junior and finish up, and you could come over as early as a freshman.
Yep, and they, they could. Fewer of the freshmen have been going there. So generally speaking, it's going to be more to your tenth, eleventh, twelfth grade now. Even saying in tenth grade, it may not be that they're a true tenth, tenth grader. It could be that they did not have enough credits to go to eleventh grade. Generally speaking, there's a handful of students that can go through much more quickly when they go through there. So they may complete within a month or, or two months. The average would be longer than a year ago, definitely longer than that year's time because they're generally going to come there behind in credits, and they're working to try to catch up. Some can stay consistent with it. I think with some of these new opportunities where they can go out and earn some of those credits and not need to be there so many hours of each day, that they could expedite some of that. And part of that will truly be done because of the agreement also and, and the change of the graduation requirements. So they do have the opportunity to go to do different things that will meet their needs more so, and, and the math, science, social studies, English will still accomplish that through the online and through the, um, the teacher-taught hybrids. I think the hybrids will help immensely, but it was definitely over a year's time it, it took. And matter of fact, I, we didn't run those numbers on it. I'm going to imagine it's well over two years they would take those students to finish, if they finished, and that's another hard part of that.
And I would echo Cynthia in that I feel like the students that come to this program, it's a variety of reasons, but for some of them, it may just be that the traditional education isn't for them. For others, it might be that they are distracted by the work that they have to do to maybe support their families, and so school is challenging. And so adding these additional options, you know, I'm just thinking a student could do the work for credit, and they could work in the evenings. And yes, they're going to get paid, which helps their family, but they're also earning credits towards their education too. And so as our community continues to change and, and evolve, and students have different things following them in several directions, this is such a wonderful option for those students to really help them to get value out of their education. I love that we're doing the CTE things because our goal would obviously be that for all of our students, when they graduate from our district, that they have tangible skills that they can take and not just have to end up with a solely entry-level position, but that they have something that sets them apart. And so even if they go to Joe Foss and they get an alternative education, they still have the opportunity to get that value and those additional skills. So I think this is awesome, and I, I hope that, and I imagine that you'll get that same feedback from students who maybe have been there this year, and then they get to come back next year, and they want to come back next year because of the offering, and they want to finish because they have a class they're hoping to get to take because they heard things from other students or whatever it may be. And long-term, that's just going to help us to produce more graduates, but also more productive members of our community as well. So thank you and your team.
And talking with individuals over at the Joe Foss, that is part of the hope too, that this will attract some of those students that haven't completed, that haven't been attending, back into the program.
Thank you.
Great work by the committee. This covers so many needs that we have. Just, I'm excited to see the results from this. Thanks for doing that.
This really speaks to some research I was just reading about out of Stanford, and it really shows some sensitivity towards the various learning styles of those students at Joe Foss, and to the extent that we used our local resources here, right here in the school district, to tackle those deep issues and create that burning desire to learn, be lifelong learners in those students, and really set them up for success is a reflection of you all, and way to go. Seeing none, I would like, do I have a motion to acknowledge your report on the work completed by the Joe Foss and President's Academy Review Committee?
So moved.
Second.
A motion second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign.
Thank you.
Well, the next topic on the agenda is the topic of the Lennox School District Tax Sharing Agreement that we have. Here to talk through that agreement with you prior to the public hearing is our business manager, Todd Veek.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Maher. I think this might be the fifth time we've discussed this. Goes back to last May or June, I'm not sure which. We did a, we did a informational report on it, and then on December ninth, the board approved a resolution of intent with a, with a boundary change for the Lennox School District. That includes a tax sharing agreement. Just to remind you of that, it's a tax sharing agreement on the residential property over a twenty-year period. It phases out. It's very similar to what we did with West Central quite a few years ago now. On the commercial property in one, the West Central, we just, we knew where it was, we carved around it, and, and, and it wasn't part of the exchange. But since this land is not yet brought into the, most of this land is not yet brought into the school or to the city yet, we don't know where that commercial property would be. So the phase out on that is forty years instead of, instead of twenty. The resolution that you approved required the involved school districts to have an appraisal of the affected properties. That happened, and the appraisal came in at a fifty-four point one million dollars. It was approved by the, by you at your meeting held on February tenth. Both, we, we had a waiting period on that. If we wanted to appeal the appraisal, but both Lennox, and, and we waived that. So our next step is to hold a public hearing tonight. It was advertised in the August leader, March sixth. So tonight, we, we would have the public hearing, and following that, we would, with your final approval of this, we would have thirty days for voters from either school district to petition it if they, they don't want the change to happen. And if that doesn't happen within thirty days, then we, both sides will send, send your resolution to the Minnehaw County School District, and we'll wait for them to approve it. Just to refresh your memory, I, I'm there, I just put up the map, the area, and the purple area is the Sioux Falls, purple area to the right is the Sioux Falls School District. Brown area is, is tea, and the Lennox area is the light gray. And so the shaded area is the area we're talking about. And as, as the map says, it's a little over, it's a little over five, it's like five hundred and seventy acres. So with that, I'd ask you to conduct the public hearing and then approve the resolution for a boundary change. Thank you.
I will now open it for public hearing. Individual testimony shall be limited to three minutes, and you may address the board without having signed up if there is anyone who would like to address. Seeing none, I close the public hearing. Do I have a motion to approve the resolution for a boundary change between the Lennox School District forty-one dash four and the Sioux Falls School District forty-nine dash five in further approving the agreement for tax sharing?
So moved.
Second. Have a motion and second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you, Todd.
Okay, our third item of this evening will also be done by Mr. Veek, and that is our legislative update. Interesting day today.
Yes.
Yeah, thank, thank you again. So last time, we kind of went through many of the key bills that we opposed were defeated. Right now, that number is pretty much all, all the key bills that we had. There's eleven of them that were defeated. I won't go through those again because we went through those last time. And then I would just say since last time, Senate Bill one seventy, which was the governor's bill regarding capital outlay, that was the kind of compromise between the education groups and the governor's office, has passed both houses. It hasn't been signed yet by the governor, but it was her bill, so I'm guessing she'll sign it. And, and the part of that, that, that will affect us in Sioux Falls is it changes the, the inflationary increase from three percent or inflation, whichever's less, to three percent. And then plus, you all, all school, you also get new construction. But the inflationary amount went to just a flat three. So we thought that was a good compromise. And then, of course, the big news today is that the leadership of both houses and the governor have, you have a tentative agree on, there isn't a bill that's been passed yet, but a tentative agree or an agreement to go to two percent, which is what the statutory inflation factor was for school districts. That's in the general fund. My understanding is that in the special ed fund, they did their three-year adjustment, and that will be the increase for schools there because that, that amount tends to, that grew, and it about grew for us, I think, around two percent too. That's fairly ironic. That's, or, it's not, wouldn't be that way for every school. Some will be higher, some, some would be less. But I, I understand that that, that adjustment is what's going to be the inflationary on the special ed side. So with that, I'd stand by for questions or then just ask you to approve the report.
Thank you for your work at our last meeting regarding the history of what school funding has, and I, I think that was helpful when I at least reached. has, and I think that was helpful when I at least reached out to legislators to lobby on school districts' behalf of about 2% and keeping that promise. So I appreciated that information. It was helpful, and thank you to the governor and the legislature for some, they made a deal. Yes, thank you. I'll be moved. Do I have a motion to approve the legislative update report? So moved.
Second.
I have a motion second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Yep, we've got four policies up for review tonight. They are, all four of them are up for review revised because they really had minimal changes to them, but I'll go through them. We had GBJ, Staff Directory. We updated language to current practice. GBM, Permanent Employees for Purposes of South Dakota Retirement System, no changes. IKB and its accompanying regulation homework. We clarified some language there. And then IKE, Promotion, Retention, and Acceleration of Students. Again, just clarified some language. So I move to approve, to approve the review revision of the four policies.
Second.
Motion as second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Last, can you handle the appointment? Do I just read that?
Yeah, if you'd like to.
I didn't know if you did or...
I can do it. I'm happy to.
I haven't printed out.
And, you know, I know Beth's been working with you guys to get this scheduled. So what we're, what we're working with here is your, our part as a school district on the Board of Equalization, we need one of you at those meetings, and I know she's working. So you have that in your materials, you all know what year of your time. We just need a, we just need a motion to approve that. So I'll just read it quick. Appoint all school board members to the local Board of Equalization in accordance with STCL 101113. It being understood that all members of the school board will serve as they are able to schedule their time, and authorizing school board members to be paid for attending the Board of Equalization hearings beginning Monday, March 16th, 2020, and concluding Friday, March 21, 2020. Thank you.
Do I have a motion? So moved. Do I have a second?
Second.
I'll take it by roll call. Board member Tolkien.
Aye.
Board member Parker.
Aye.
Board member Lyder.
Aye.
Board member B.
Aye.
And board member Mickelson. Aye. I'll approve. The motion carries. Thank you. I would just like to point out that Thursday is our first community input session for the boundaries at Memorial at 5:30. So reminder to attend if you are able to. You can attend one or all. It doesn't matter if you live in the Memorial District. Attend whichever one works best to your schedule, or all of them if you want to keep posted on what's going on. The following one will be Monday, March 16th, at Patrick Henry, same time at 5:30. And other than that, anything else for the good of you? Thank you. Now, do I have a motion for adjournment?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion as second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. We are adjourned. Thank you.
Like 3rd floor or something? Okay. Okay.
And she'll know which ones are canned, which she said by the 12, I think. Does that sound right? Here's a little something for this. Yes. Something else.
Brilliant. I think just brilliant. I didn't know to tell you to back off tonight.
Okay, so perfect, so I can now sign it. Do you need other people? Have to sign it? Okay.
Until I saw all of them approve the, February, the marks.
Is that it? Thank you very much, ma'am. And I'll get those letters too. I have it drafted. I was just going to have Ted look at it and see if he thought any improvement on those. So thanks for your help on those. I, yeah, well, she did. This is perfect, so thank you. I appreciate that.